I hope this can be a productive meeting. So we're here to gather public input. This is, the Planning Commission isn't really going to be doing any debate in the course of this. It's really to hear your take on the whole situation of the Holy Smoke Solar Project. And this is a controversial project locally. We ask everybody to be on your best behavior. This is your meeting. Be civil about it. And everybody will get a chance to speak. So let me give you the rules for the evening. It's a forum of, for citizens to share their opinions and information on all sides of the issue. There will be a time limit of two minutes per person for comments. And we have a timekeeper here who will keep track of that. Everyone will be able to speak once until all who wish to speak have been heard. Audience questions will be directed and answered by the Planning Commission members or the panel of experts. Intra-audience discussion or answering of citizen questions from the floor will be prohibited. People will be called on before speaking. Please state your name before presenting your comment. We will alternate between Zoom and in-person attendees. If you are attending on Zoom, please check to see that your sound is working and that you know how to raise your hand to be called on. There will not have a chat function. Please read the information on the town website regarding the Public Utility Commission's timeline and how to make comments to the Public Utilities Commission Board going forward. So.
I'm gonna.
Let me introduce the members of the Planning Commission. And they will in turn introduce the panel of experts who are here for the evening. So we have Martha Cornwell, Naomi Miller, Mike Foley, Rajan, and Nancy Burns. Martha will take over here.
Good evening. It's lovely to see everyone and such a lovely turnout. I'd like to introduce our panel for the evening. We'd like to welcome Bill Colvin, who is the Executive Director for Bennington County Regional Commission. And to his left, we have Reed Wills. He is the Chief Operating Officer at Sun East Development for Freepoint Solar. And on our Zoom tonight, we have Representative David Durfee, Shasbury's representative in the House of Representatives. And we also have Jim Porter, who is the Director of Public Advocacy at the Vermont Department of Public Service. So thank you so much for being here this evening to help us with any questions that might come up from our citizens. What we'd like to do is to open it up for public comments. If you wouldn't mind, if you'd like to make a comment tonight to line up at the microphone, please remember that you will be called before speaking and to say your name and then make your comments. And that we will be going back and forth between someone here in the room and then someone on the Zoom, which you'll be seeing up here on the screen. Thank you so much. If you'd like to line up.
Here we go. Some people dying to speak.
You're running this thing?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Just.
All right, sir. If you would like to step forward, please.
My name's Dan Rappahan. I'm new to Shasbury. Been in Vermont 42 years. General contractor, big on solar. I'm doing my.
Turned up very high. Come on, let's have some juice.
If you could hold for just a moment, please.
Is this one?
Okay. So maybe we're gonna just switch this one. Pardon us?
It's always this way with the damn equipment.
This is good practice for our town meeting coming up. So we'll get it all worked out before that. Oh, wait. That one's for Zoom.
Yeah. My name's Dan Rappahan. I just moved to Shasbury.
Closer to the mic.
Dan Rappahan, just moved to Shasbury. Forty-one years in Peru, Vermont. General contractor, big on solar, doing my second system at my home. But I'm totally against this project, whatever. Big systems like this will just decrease the amount that we get paid back from Green Mountain Power, the land erosion, everything else. So you're talking to somebody who's big on solar. But I just want you to know, we could take a little vote here, just to what you're up against or not. I'm nay. Let's hear a vote of hands. Who's in favor of this? Who's not in favor? Say no. Raise your hands. Who's in favor? Who's not in favor? Not in favor. Now, who's in favor?
Sir, sir, sir.
I'm sorry. This is really for comment. This is for comment.
At your to the rules of the meeting.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I'm just saying, so with the studies and everything else, it do, this is big corporation. Big corporations don't work ever, as you see with our government, anything else. That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a comment on Zoom, please? There are no hands raised for the Zoom? Okay. We'll go on. Okay. If you'd like to speak, please. I'm sorry, that's very high.
My name is PJ DeVito, and I love living in Shasbury. I'm not here to dispute the value of solar power. I'm here to dispute a large solar project, which will not leave its energy in our town. I'm here to speak really from the heart. In this climate of greed and what's in it for me, we need more people to speak out for what's good and honest and best for all of us. Whether you are a native Vermonter or a transplant, a lot of us here tonight are here because we love our green mountains, our clean water, our abundant wildlife. In short, our way of life in a beautiful state. And I believe our way of life is much more important than money. I've worked in tourism for Bennington County and the state of Vermont for 20 years. I know tourism, and I know that it is the number, the number-two industry in our state. I know why people come here. And it's not to see solar farms on our hillside. There are so, so few special places left in our country, and we're lucky to live in one of them. Let's not allow our special place to be desecrated. Once that happens, we can't go back. I have friends who've moved to this region because it's happened in their towns. This may sound silly to a lot of you and idealistic to some, especially those in business who care about profit. But I believe that if more people made decisions from the heart, our world would be a much better place. There's plenty of land in Connecticut. This is our home. Don't let another state use us for their own gain. Don't let our, don't let a company take away what we love. Please.
If we can all hold applause, this is not the place for the applause. Is there a comment from Zoom? There's no hands up on Zoom at the moment? Okay. Sir, if you can come forward.
Hello, I'm Jim Poole. My family lives at 708 Holy.
Can you lift up?
Sorry.
Thank you.
My family lives at 708 Holy Smoke. We're the property budding, budding directly downhill from the project. I've made comments at all the meetings, so I'm just kind of quickly summarize, you know, things that are concerning to us. First of all, just the view, you know, the size of this project and where it's starting. It's proposed to start 250 feet from our house. We live downhill from this project, and to mitigate that view is going to be very difficult. The company did come out and, you know, we met with them at our house, and they looked at it, and they seemed to be in agreement that it's going to be difficult. You know, it's, you know, the other thing is just the size of this project. Fifty thousand panels is what we're hearing. You know, it's clear-cutting land. It's clear-cutting, you know, you know, ground vegetation. There's a lot of water in that area. I know because I'm directly downhill. Even now with, with the property as it is, we receive a lot of runoff. There's springs up there. And one of my major concerns was.
Can you mute him, please?
One of my major concerns is the environmental studies have been done for the property, but they haven't been done downstream, you know, downhill. You know, there's, there's talk about the groundwater, the temperatures being elevated up to 10 degrees. You know, all this water goes right into, into Perrin Creek and goes into Lake Perrin and, and the river is, you know, putting, putting trout at risk if this is really true. You know, I think, I think the studies really need to be done, done to make sure that the property around, you know, this project are protected. I'm concerned about our road. The water runoff on that road is a challenge.
15 seconds.
It's, it's been worked on a lot by the town, and it's a good spot. But if we're having more water go down that road, it's, it's, you know, we're all afraid that it's going to get washed out. So these are all comments that I've made before, and I'm just kind of summarizing them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom, please?
Barbara. Barbara. Barbara.
Barbara, if you could go ahead and speak, please.
Okay. I'm opposed to the construction and installation of a solar array of this epic industrial magnitude in the town of Shasbury, Vermont. It does not reflect our fine community in any way whatsoever. None of our leaker in Vermont towns to miles around has such an industrial-sized solar structure supporting an entirely different state. The detrimental ecological impact will be devastating to our flora and planet and an eyesore to anyone who passes by. Property values will precipitously plummet, certainly not of green endeavor. People come to Vermont for its glorious explosion of color, Vermont hillsides and roadways. This will be eliminated by this industrial structure. I wonder if the company has consulted wildlife specialists, what they have in store planned, if there is a plot of some sort to destroy the power grid, if they have consulted someone like Liz Plutnam from the Stubborn Conservation Corps, if they consulted the Sierra Club. There's nothing like this in the entire state of Vermont. We're having a 14-acre installation on 7A that they're working on right now, which is quite an eye sore. As anyone travels on 7A, you can clearly see it. There's a small town on Buck Hill. I mean, so many systems of that magnitude are much more acceptable.
Barbara, thank you so much. That was time. Thank you so much. If you can come forward and just make sure that you're close enough to the mic so that everybody can hear, please.
Hello?
Yeah, good. Thank you.
My name's Eleanor Tordy. There's a lot of information to put in two minutes. Reuters reported in June and July of 2021, Brazil probes U.S. oil trader Freepoint an alleged bribery scheme. Both Brazil and U.S. Justice Department investigated Freepoint involvement with Brazilian oil company Petrobras. This activity spanned seven-year period and was part of a larger investigation known as Operation Car Wash. Some of the key players, Rodrigo Berkowitz, he was the ex-Petro. Petro. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. It's on Zoom. Can you mute them, please? Please continue.
Okay. Can I continue?
Yes.
He was an ex-Petrobras fuel trader, received bribes from Freepoint through middleman Eduardo Inesco for tipping off Freepoint competitors' bids to edge them out. Berkowitz pleaded guilty to U.S. charges of conspiracy to commit money laundering and for accepting kickbacks. In search of his sentence, I found a court document, case number 119, The United States of America Against Rodrigo Garcia Berkowitz, who is the defendant, quoted in this court document, "Trading Company III," the identity of which is known to the United States, was an oil trading company incorporated in the United States with its principal place in business in Connecticut. Therefore, all relevant times, Trading Company III was a domestic concern, as is, as the term is used in, and has a title and code. For information other than Berkowitz, these court documents do not give nays, but only refers to people as for, as people, foreign official, domestic concern, et cetera, to be known to the United States. Does this court document refer to Freepoint commodities as a domestic concern? The other players were Eduardo Inesco, middleman consultant to Freepoint from 2012 to 20, or 2012 to 2018. He was alleged compensated with inflating commissions to cover costs of bribes who passed these kickbacks to Petrobras employees, including Berkowitz. He is now a fugitive.
Thank you so much.
I will leave this information here for you and also the court document.
Thank you. Is there someone on Zoom?
Annette.
Annette? Annette, could you please speak? You're on.
Yes, I'm just speaking on a technical issue. Something has happened with the microphone for Zoom. Could you please make, do a sound check and make sure that both of the microphones are working? Because I can barely hear the live speaker. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much for that. We're, we're increasing the sound. How is that for you, Annette?
All right, that's fine. I want you to know if there's a problem, if the next person speaks into the microphone.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Ken, if you can come forward, please, and just make sure that you're close to the mics and maybe tip both of them down.
You guys got these too tall for me.
Yeah. Annette, can you hear Ken as he's speaking? Can you just say test? Test?
Yeah, Ken Harrington?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great. Ken, go ahead.
Okay. The town of Bennington has a zoo ordinance that covers any solar site over 1,000 square feet. The town, why can't the town of Shasbury have it? You're not protecting the town if we don't have something like that. I'm not opposed to solar. This is not something that should be allowed in town without a vote by the townspeople. It's just too big an item. It should have the proper drainage for any site like this or any site as far as that You guys, I know, I talked to someone and they have a copy of this, and Shasbury should have it. I went to the September 30th Select Board meeting, and I asked them to put on, to vote against this plan till we had more direction on it and more information. This thing you've got here, you can't see it with a microscope, so you don't have any idea other than 50,000 panels. Anything like I say, this big should be put on a vote by the town. The Select Board refused to put that on at that time, and that was the last time they could get it on before the March ballot. The Planning Commission should have that. And, let's see. As I say, it should be voted on by the town.
Thank you.
You just can't let something like this, that big, go without the town voting on it.
Thank you. Is this on? No. Okay.
Just use your big, big voice.
Okay, my big voice. I just wanted to, to point out that the legal, in, in response to Mr. Harrington's comment, that the legal timelines for enacting any new bylaws don't leave us time to impact this particular project. Just to assert a factual.
Bill, I didn't know if you wanted to make any comments in, in response to the question that Mr. Harrington brought up? Just, thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Thanks very much, Martha. So I feel like I'm in the unfortunate seating situation here. I just, just to be clear, the Bennington County Regional Commission is not an advocate for this project. We will not take a position for or against this project. Our role in this project is to evaluate it vis-à-vis the regional energy plan and the regional plan, as well as the Shasbury Town Plan, and make comments in the public comment period of an application, just as the town of Shasbury will or anybody else. So just to be clear, I am in no way or nor is the Regional Commission affiliated with the project. We're here at the request of the Planning Commission to provide information to, to the folks of the community. With regard to the question that Martha just referenced, the town of Shasbury, when it adopted its most recent town plan, made the conscious decision to not include what is known as an enhanced energy section of that plan, which is a really comprehensive process to go through and look at the energy usage in three separate areas, thermal, electricity, and transportation, to look at the current use, project future use of that energy, and then to set targets and goals for reduction of greenhouse gases and other implications of those, that energy usage over time. As part of that enhanced energy section, there can be, as Mr. Harrington noted, the opportunity to put in place certain citing criteria. And if that happens in a hearing, such as what will occur potentially if this project moves forward at the Public Utility Commission, the concern, the, the input from the town is given what is considered substantial deference. Without a enhanced energy plan in your town plan, input from the town is given due consideration. And Mr. Porter from the Department of Public Service may wish to provide a little more elucidation of that. But to, to the point regarding time, typically to amend a town plan, and specifically if we were to include an enhanced energy section, is that if everything goes well, given the time to compile the documents through required public hearings, which would be, one, at the Planning Commission level, and two, at the Select Board level, all with at least 30 days' notice, is it a minimum a six-month process? And as I understand the law, should this permit, or should the application be filed with the Public Utility Commission before that were to occur, the documents in place at the time of the filing would be the governing documents. So hopefully that helps with regard to the explanation of time and, and what an enhanced energy section or revisions to the town plan would mean.
Thank you very much for that. Is there someone on Zoom at the moment that would like to speak? Okay. Sue, if you'd like to come forward, please.
Can you hear me? My name is Sue Andrews. My husband and I raised our family here in Shasbury. We sold our house a year ago, and we're building a very small, very energy-efficient house in North Bennington. I had come prepared tonight to speak about this project from the public health point of view, because that's where my expertise lies. Suffice it to say that 7 million people die each year from contamination from fossil fuel electric generation. That's more than have died from COVID in the past three years. So this is the kind of fact that isn't in many of our lives, but, but it's out there. Seven million people a year die around the world because of pollution from fossil fuel electric generation. Being here has changed my mind about what I want to say. I spent quite a bit of time preparing some remarks, but I just want to comment on emotion. A number of decades ago, I spent a number of grueling years in graduate school in public policy at the University of California at Berkeley. Studying policy was interesting. It was interesting to see how our country makes its policy. And we studied, you know, all sorts of things about data compilation, data analysis, econometrics, law, politics, just soup to nuts. What we didn't talk about, and this was back in the 80s, was emotion. And look at what has happened in our country in the last number of decades with regards to emotion.
15 seconds.
15 seconds. So I just want to say that emotion does run high. I want to acknowledge that change is difficult. None of us wants to see our paradise changed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any folks on Zoom that would like to speak? No raised hands? Okay. Sir, if you'd like to come forward, please.
Thank you. Peter Bosco, I had prepared remarks, but before I was going to come up there, I learned that this is already a done deal, that basically there's no recourse, that the state has already determined, decided that this is going to go through. I don't know, I think that's how, that's what I was told. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Something we should.
I, I think that maybe we'll let you finish and then we.
Okay. I have two issues with this project. First of all, it's just grotesque. I mean, 65 football fields. I mean, that's sheer lunacy. The only thing this nice gentleman from Solar Energy is interested in is green, but it's not carbon-free. And I was on the phone with a friend in Connecticut. I was explaining the size of this, the speed of it all, and he said, this smacks of corruption. To get back to Nicole's point, this doesn't look good, doesn't have a good look. My other issue is the town of Manchester had this 30-acre proposal back in 2021. The town killed it based on town aesthetic. Town aesthetic is a code word for property values. The property values in these, these people's homes, and Holy Smoke Road is going to go down the toilet. I think there should be some kind of legal recourse. I think there's civil action here. I think it should be investigated. This should not go through. This is 100% wrong. It's crazy. Just to say it's green, everybody jumps on the green bandwagon, but it shouldn't be that way. You don't know what you have till it's gone. You put up, you pave a parking lot, what is it? How's that go? You pave a parking lot and you lose paradise or whatever? That's what's going on here, okay? Just because it's green doesn't mean it's good. There's a lot of detriments to solar panels, too. So I'm, I'm 1,000% against this, and this needs to be stopped.
15 seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Folks, no, no clapping, please. Folks, no clapping. That is not in our rules. Please refrain.
I'm wondering if we should ask Jim Porter to speak to the issue of, in what sense this is a done deal at the state level? Because I think he can talk a little bit about the quite important input that citizens can still have.
Sure. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So also with me tonight is Eric Guzman, who is another lawyer at the department. And I believe whenever you guys were ready, he has a brief presentation, maybe a couple points to go through. It kind of goes through the process. But to answer the gentleman's question a moment ago, this, Vermont law requires that when somebody wants to sign a project like this, that they provide notice. And they have done that, and so we're in the notice period. So this has not been filed as a petition before the Public Utility Commission yet. So from the state's perspective, I think it's very much not a done deal. The review hasn't even started, and it won't start until a petition is filed with the Public Utility Commission. So does that answer that question for you? And would you like for Eric to go through his brief presentation? Would that be helpful to people?
Yes.
Yep. So I guess, yes. We'll take a moment, a break from public. Yep. So I guess, yes, we'll take a moment, a break from public comments to have that happen.
Eric, are you with us on the meeting?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, was it Eric that was going to be coming on?
It's just you.
Okay.
This is Eric Guzman.
So Eric, before you start, if you can just keep this fairly brief, because we have folks that are also out here making comments and needing to make comments, but we'd love to kind of hear the process. And I don't know if we're going to be able to let you have access to put up the PowerPoint, but perhaps we might be able to receive that from you and then put it on our town website for everybody to kind of review and maybe send questions to you if they have them.
Yeah, and I will keep this brief. So yeah, the Section 248 process is rather extensive, and it's somewhat difficult to summarize in just a few quick sentences. But I do just echo Jim Porter's statements. This is currently in the advanced notice segment of the Section 248 process. The state agencies, the PUC, have, you know, we need any sort of final decisions on this. The department, you know, has not engaged in its review of this project yet. That will have to take place once the petition is filed. And once the petition is filed, the hearing officer will be assigned by the Public Utility Commission. And in this case, we'll essentially go through a full sort of litigation-type process with opportunity for the regional and municipal planning commissions, as well as the municipal legislative body, to participate in process as a statutory part of the proceeding. And the members of the public may also participate in the process through the submission of public comments directly with the commission. We will likely request a public hearing and cite this if needed for this, so that there are additional opportunities for members of the public to participate. And we, there's also an opportunity for, for example, joining land members to request intervention to become a participating party in the commission's scheme, which grants them the full right to engage in an evidentiary hearing, a process called discovery, cross-examination, briefing, and so on. So I will submit the presentation to the town planning commission, in case anyone is interested. I've also included some helpful links at the end of that presentation to get more information on it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. And we will put that out on our town website so everyone can see that when we receive it. Yep.
And just one last statement, you know, making do with the public comments that are made here. We do really appreciate participation by members of the public, because public comments, while they cannot be a basis for a decision by the PUC, they certainly help the department in sort of narrowing our scope of focus on what particular issues we should be looking at, as well as other state agencies. So your public participation, you know, comments that you provide are incredibly helpful for us. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And Bill has a comment as well.
Mr. Guzman, I think it might be helpful to, sorry. Mr. Guzman, I think it might be helpful to set expectations by talking about, you know, approximate timeframes, understanding that, you know, there's a wide variety of factors here, but can you help the community understand about how long, once a filing has occurred, that process might take?
Yeah, so it is, you know, somewhat difficult to gauge the exact timeframe. Once a petition is filed, we, you know, essentially engage in a process where we set the schedule to have all of the, you know, the process and review that's required for Section 248. You know, discovery alone, which is part of the litigation process, takes, you know, a couple of months, you know, every month in some instances. An evidentiary hearing is typically scheduled out, you know, in most cases, four or five months. So, I mean, usually, in Section 248 cases, depending on the number of issues that are present, and then as well as, you know, how many individuals or state agencies or interested parties are contesting certain aspects of the case. In Section 248, a final decision, you know, could occur months and, you know, possibly, you know, a year out from the, you know, final, or from the submission of the petition at the beginning. So it's, it's a, you know, given that there, you know, potentially could be issues raised with this case, you know, we're looking at a somewhat extensive process. It's not something that's decided, you know, quickly without thought.
Thank you very much. Sir, if you'd like to come forward, please, and just raise the mics again.
Hello. My name's Pete Sternberg.
If you could get closer to the mic.
Okay. Is this better? Yeah, okay. My name's Pete Sternberg. I've lived in Shasbury for over 30 years. I have worked in the solar industry for over 10 years. I'm retired now. I wanted to just tell people what I believe about this project. Number one, the planet and our kids desperately need this type of project. Climate change from fossil fuels is real. Number two, the project, as I understand it, can be well-hidden from what I've looked at. Three, if this array were 200 feet from our property, I would not mind. You could not ask for a quieter neighbor, and it will not be particularly visible. Number four, the risk of fires is minute. Data from Germany and Japan have shown this. Infrared monitoring of the array can further reduce the chance of electrical fires. Number five, this will sound odd, but I really don't care where the profit goes, as long as it's not to Russia. We buy power from Hydro Quebec and fuel from Exxon. Our Vermont dollars go out of state. Our town and the state, and the state will get tax revenue. Number six, in a few decades, the land can be returned to farming if it makes, if it makes sense at the time. That's all I had.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there any- No, no clapping, please. Is there anybody on Zoom at the moment to speak? Okay. Jesse, if you'd like to come forward, please?
Hello, thank you. I would thank everybody for coming out tonight. I appreciate the engagement. I'm from Studio Hill Farm at the intersection of Trumbull Hill Road in Holy Smoke. I've also started StopShasburySolar.org. This proposed solar field would forever degrade the view from our farm and from our neighbors to the north. I feel it's a threat to our wildlife, our natural resources, and the way of life in the hills that my wife's family has cherished and fought to protect since 1936. Anyone familiar with the area can tell you that this solar facility will be visible from public places, including the trails to the east at White Rocks and up on Glastonbury, trails to the west in Arlington State Park and West Mountain, and from the north all the way up to Mount Equinox. But more than that, I feel the fear that this project may be the death knell for Vermont farms and our ability to make a living here. We're losing our industries, we're losing small businesses, our small colleges, and as the climate warms, our ski mountains. And though they are struggling, we still have farms and healthy soil, which I would argue is one of our best allies in the fight against climate change. Unfortunately, one of the unintended consequences of Vermont's push for solar energy is a land grab by these out-of-state corporations that have the money to buy up whole farms at a time and deploy their solar fields cheaply on land that Vermonters have kept open, productive, and healthy for generations. Our farms are more than just open land they can exploit. State legislators I've spoken with have told me that they, for years, urge towns throughout Vermont to create these enhanced energy plans that were mentioned. Shasbury failed to do so in 2019 when it last rewrote the town plan. I'm grateful to Martha and the Planning Commission for starting that process now. A question from Mr. Durfee. As our representative and a citizen of Shasbury, and maybe Mr. Porter as well, I wonder if you might be able to help me understand the town's role going forward. We've been told, we've been told repeatedly by the Select Board that the town is powerless and can do nothing more than recommend the roads are upgraded to accommodate this project. Is that correct, or are there more, is there more the town and Select Board can do to protect its citizens from this land grab? Thank you.
Thank you. David, if you're on? Please, no clapping. On either side of this- Yes, David, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say before I respond that it is a little difficult for folks on Zoom to hear Bill Coleman, and I think it may just be the mic, and his table isn't working as well. The other mics seem to be working quite fine. My understanding, to answer Jesse's question, and I will defer to Jim Porter if I'm not correct about this, but my understanding is that the PUC does take into account the position that a town might take on a project like this. I think if Bill Coleman earlier walked us through the implications of a town having enhanced energy or solar plan as part of its town plan, Shasbury doesn't have that, Bennington does, and how Bennington does. I think that nevertheless, the PUC does take into account, position of the town if it takes a position. But maybe, Jim Porter, you could either back me up on that or correct me if I got it wrong.
So, and I may have to defer to Eric, because if litigated, this case is more risky than I have. Um, yes, somewhat it will depend upon the town plan and the regional plan. And I know in that case, they get substantial deference from the commission. Eric, am I missing anything on that?
That's right. When the municipal or regional plans receive the affirmative determination of energy compliance under 24 DSA 40 through 52, it's afforded substantial deference, which means that land conservation measures contained within the plan, you know, those specific policies here are applied to the commission's determination unless there's a, what the Senate actually says is a clear convincing demonstration that the other factors affecting the general good of the state outweigh the application of that land conservation measure. In the absence of the affirmative determination of energy compliance, the town recommendations, the planning commission's recommendations, as well as the town regional plan, are afforded due consideration, which still factors into the commission's analysis, but it's not as robust as the substantial deference standard. The commission still certainly considers the recommendation in the town plan, our regional plan, when making this decision under what's called the orderly development of the region criteria.
Thank you very much. Reed, I was wondering if you'd like to respond to the last gentleman's communications, if there was anything you'd like to add at this moment?
Can you hear me?
Might have to get pretty close, I think, to the microphone, and we're keeping things-
Yeah.
Better.
Okay, thanks for having us here. Thanks for giving me a chance to speak. You know, I agree 100%. We're in the application phase, so we have a 45-day notice. The 45-day notice typically doesn't go out to the abutting landowners. You know, we went ahead and did that because we thought it was important to let everybody know what plan that we have out here. But we gave you a conceptual plan in the absence of having all those studies complete, because that's the process that the state of Vermont has. We are now working-
We just need to make sure that you're on this one as well, just so that you're speaking. I'm sorry, so that the folks on Zoom can hear.
Always. Never fails. Is this looking amateur? Okay. One more time. So, you know, what we wanted to share was, we've begun this process. We've put out a conceptual plan. It certainly created a lot of interest in the town, a lot of emotion in the town. And, you know, we understand that, and we would ask that you allow the process to continue. A lot of people have questions about wildlife impacts, water impacts. We believe those will be quite negligible. And, you know, I've been working in solar since 2011. Your neighbors to the south in Massachusetts have, you know, lots and lots of solar projects down there, even in Bennington County and in Shasbury. There's solar projects out there that are not harming the land and will not harm the land. We have no intention to do so. So, you know, the process is just getting started. In our notice to all the abutting landowners, we provided phone number, email address, and we're beginning to engage with some of our, some of the members of the community. We'll just let you know, we will sit down with everybody. So we understand some people are against the project. Maybe they'll always be against the project, but you still may have questions. And if you want to sit down, myself, my team are, you know, very open to try and communicate. And you will see very extensive studies that I believe are going to address many of the questions that you have, and I believe many of the concerns, such as rising temperatures of water, degradation of land, you know, you're going to find, we're protecting the land, we're putting pollinator habitat in, we're doing things that are good for farming because of the addition of new pollinator habitat. We've been doing that all over the country. So we're very committed to try and work with you, and we appreciate you coming out tonight. Appreciate all the comments on the EPC website, because it lets us know what you're interested in, and we're working hard to put information together to address that.
Thank you very much. Is there someone on Zoom that would like to chat? Okay. If you'd like to come forward, please?
Good evening. My name is Bill Fisk. I'm a 30-some-odd-year resident of the town of Shasbury. And my comments are based upon an article I read in Vermont Digger. So I, to the extent there may be some flaws in the article, I don't take any credit for those, and I apologize if I misstate something. But my first question was, when I read the article, how does this help Vermont? You know, we understand that this is an opportunity to generate power, but it's quite likely the power, how do you say how I say that? It's probable the power might go out of state. You know, I would think that we would want to have, hopefully, the Public Utility Commission would require that the power be distributed back to Vermont as a minimum, so that we're getting something out of this other than some tax dollars, because I think that's very important, how that power is used. And I wonder if the permitting can be conditioned on that requirement. I know other things have been done in that area. I don't know about the role of the Public Utility Commission versus Act 250, but I understand there are Act 250 concerns involved, as they've been expressed by many people here tonight. The article says that it's prime agricultural land. And if that's the case, then I think the Act 250 requirements- And if that's the case, then I think the Act 250 requirements have to be very seriously And really, the only other comment I have to all of this is, um, I don't think that, again, the tax revenue stated somewhere on a website was about $100,000 a year. While that's not insignificant, to me, it's not sufficient revenue to.
15 seconds.
Thank you. Not sufficient revenue to justify a project on that basis alone. So I think Act 250 is a big consideration. The value back to Vermont is a big consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Would Jim or David like to address the concerns that, that were just brought up by Mr. Fisk or, or Bill potentially about the benefits?
I would.
Oh, and certainly.
Again. Hi, if you can hear me, I'm sure, and I think Jim is, is still as well. The, the question about Act 250, Martha, what you're.
Yep, that can be one of them. Whichever question you'd like, yes.
Okay, so I think Act 250, there are exemptions written into Vermont statute. Act 250 doesn't apply in, to agriculture, for example, to farming. It also doesn't apply to the, to, uh, energy. Jim, why don't you step in here because I don't want to be too broad or too specific, but I don't think it applies to this case. The EPC uses a different process, section 248. Jim, I'd be able to explain the details a little bit, but I think it's intended to cover the same environmental concerns that Act 250 does.
That's right. It's what you said is generally correct, but no, this, this will go through the 248 process through the Public Utility Commission. And many of the criteria are the same, and I don't know if Eric mentioned this. I apologize, we've got a puppy, it's, it's going to get spoilt, going right now, so I just got a little bit distracted. The Agency of Natural Resources will be a statutory party, and they look at all of the natural environment issues, and then the department has the criteria that it reviews as well.
Thank you very much. And Chris, would you?
No, they covered it.
Okay.
Is it possible that Bill would be able to address the issue of the energy going out of the state?
Bill, do you have any comments about the energy going out of the state and addressing that in any way?
Sure. So, you know, without question, as we understand, again, there's no formal filing yet at this point, but it appears that a contract may be in place at some point in the future with a Connecticut energy company. You know, it's, it's important to remember that very little of the energy that Vermont utilizes is actually produced in Vermont. We get most of our energy, the vast majority of the energy that comes to Vermont comes from other places, other places that are dealing with the impact of the production of that energy. In this particular case, the energy being produced would go into the New England grid. It's really difficult to track an ion and figure out what exact ions are coming back to Vermont from that grid, but it does, you know, stay within New England. So there may be additional ways to ensure that more of the power produced stays in Vermont, but the fact that it goes into the New England grid does in fact benefit all of New England, including Vermont.
Thank you.
Just to clarify one key point, FreePoint's a Connecticut-based business. We've never at any time said the power is going to Connecticut. FreePoint Solar is an investment business that is primarily run by people at Sun East Development, people that work for me. And we have not committed to sell the power yet. But I thought it's probably worth telling you that a great deal of the renewable power that GMP is now using and distributing was developed in a wind project in northern New Hampshire, Granite Reliable, that was developed by my business partner and, and a bit, and a company that he was with previously. So, um, you know, we, we know GMP historically from doing business with them. We're open to working with GMP. But the reality is, you know, we're trying to get a little further along in the process. I know you all feel like the process is moving very fast. In, in reality, there's going to be, you know, a lot of these discussions that are going to take place over the next 12 months. And, you know, some of those discussions outside of the agency and PUC will be, you know, discussions with customers. So the power may land here, it may not. It does keep the new technology that comes on, kicks off the old technology that is hurting somebody somewhere. That's for sure. So that oil-fired power, gas-fired power, you know, that's, that's necessary for the grid, but, you know, if we want to reduce that, if we want to have electric vehicles, we want to increase the amount of electricity that we use, and I understand Vermont's very interested in that. New generation that does not have emissions is very helpful in meeting those goals. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom that is raising their hands? Okay. Kit, if you'd like to come forward, please.
Uh, hi, I'm Kit Ossnitz from Holy Smoke Road. I hope we can agree upfront that no one in a rural residential area should be forced to live in the shadow of an industrial power plant. You need only walk the property that FreePoint Solar plans to litter with panels, transformers, a massive substation, roads, and fencing after stripping the fields of prime ag soil, cutting the hedgerows and forest, and demolishing the bird and wildlife habitat to realize the ecological devastation this would bring to Shasbury. It's an old lesson we never seemed to learn. You can't save the environment by destroying it. The destruction would be a permanent scar on the landscape visible from hiking trails, mountain tops, and state forests. But the panels themselves last only 25 years. Recycling is not trivial. Another mess we'd leave to our children. Let's get smarter about solar development or deployment. New commercial and residential development in Vermont consumes 11500 acres a year. If Vermont required even a fraction to be solar-ready, we could be generating hundreds of megawatts with little added disruption. But this proposal is not about clean energy, it's about dirty money. Commodity brokers like FreePoint do not make things, they make deals. They hire out-of-state contractors to do the work. Try keeping track of all those contractors. And try finding FreePoint once the damage is done. As in a butter, I have standing to intervene at the PUC against this proposal. I am told that I may need to bring an attorney and expert witnesses at my own expense to the tune of many thousands of dollars to go against pit bull attorneys financed by a wealthy corporation. Fortunately, I am uplifted by the group gathering.
Thank you, that's time, correct?
Shasbury Solar. Well, make up your minds. I accept my intervenor role. I invite you all to join me.
This is time, thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom that'd like to speak? Okay. Sir, if you'd like to come forward, please.
My name is Gary Burgess. I'm a 42-year resident of Shasbury. Lifetimes Vermonter. Back in the 60s, Vermont put a billboard ban on their highways. One of the best damn things that ever happened in this state. Route 7 South, US Route 7, limited access federal highway. You're going to be able to see that from that highway. I've driven it. I'm a firefighter. On the plan, there shows a federal permit onto the property off of a limited access highway. When there's an accident there, I'm the one that's going to be standing in the road, putting my life on the line for traffic that does not slow down for fire trucks. How about the heat that's going to generate, be generated from those panels? You've got what, 300, 400 yards wide, 600 yards long? A bird flying across there, is he going to make it across? I'd like to know that question. Now, this, this state has been run, this state has been run by out-of-staters for too long. We need to stand up and fight this. And I am with Shasbury Solar 100%, and my pocketbook is too.
Is there anybody on Zoom at the moment? Okay, thank you. Bill, if you could come forward, please.
Thank you. You can hear me okay? Hello, my name is Bill Christian. I, I've lived in Shasbury since the 90s, but I recently moved south for the climate, to North Bennington. I'm a mechanical engineer, and I've spent my whole working career reducing energy use. I'm on the North Bennington-Shasbury Energy Committee. I support this project because it will stop the burning of 270 million cubic feet of natural gas every year. I do not care in even the very slightest who buys the energy or who gets the official renewable credits for it. I care only that we will no longer be burning 270 million cubic feet of natural, fracked natural gas every year. If Connecticut, say, pays for the electricity and gets the credit towards its state goals, I am extremely happy for them. I'm thankful. I don't have $30 million personally to spend on this project, but, and I'm glad someone does. I'm glad that our laws and our policies have made it profitable. Otherwise, they wouldn't do it, and we would continue to burn that 270 million cubic feet every year. And that would be a tragedy which we can avoid. I don't like to see big corporations coming into town and destroying the mom and pop places, but this does not apply to solar. That just isn't how it works. This solar farm will not put little solar installations out of business. And I very, very much hope that residential and small community solar continues to grow in Shasbury at the amazing place that it, at pace that it has, because it is desperately needed as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak? Okay. Bleecker, if you'd like to come forward.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Bleecker Wheeler, and I'm a resident of Shasbury. I live a few miles away from the proposed project. Just have a few ethical questions for the developer as well as ourselves and our legislators as we seek to resolve this. Unless I'm mistaken, I'm pretty sure that the, that one of the biggest reasons for renewable energy is saving our planet. If that is the case, why are we cutting down forests, disrupting wetlands, and using prime agricultural land to do this when we have far better off options such as rooftops and deserted gravel pits? On the 5th of January, Mr. Willis was quoted in the Bennington Banner as saying, "We're here to begin a process of working with this community and state agencies in order to ensure the project we are proposing makes sense and is done the right way." If this is true, and they really do have our best interests in mind, I hope they're actually listening to our comments and concerns. Clearly, the locals that are most affected by this project are sternly against it, whether for aesthetic or environmental reasons. So how willing are the developers to reconsider this location and/or the size of the project? Have they arrived with respect for us and our lands, or are they willing to ignore our concerns and sidestep us in order to maximize their profit margins? Can we not work together to figure out a solution that satisfies everyone instead of creating a situation where the locals are left feeling like we're getting the short end of the stick? I understand that in terms of adopting the new energy section into the town plan, time is not on our side, but I hope that we have learned from this experience and that we are now taking the right steps as prudently as possible to do so. More importantly, if the developers actually do want to work with our community, are they going to respect our decisions, albeit late ones? Or are they going to strong-arm their way into getting what they want? If this property went into contract back in 2017, why did the developer not immediately state their purposes to the abutting neighbors and local community? Why was this project kept under wraps for five years only to finally be revealed just before the recent holidays when a lot of folks aren't even around? It would seem that anyone who truly has the best interest of this community in mind would have extended an introduction to the neighborhood first instead of pressing forward with their plans as far as they could before finally, finally revealing them in a way that does not feel at all forward and honest to our local community. Thank you.
Thank you. Reed, would you like to respond to some of those questions?
You know, I joined a select board meeting, and I've said at that meeting, and I said here, it's an awful way to talk.
Usually, it's the sabotage of the vehicle. It happens all the time. It always happens.
So we did start work on this in 2017. Two years prior to that, this was property that was put out on the market. My understanding is the property received one person who came, who had interest in buying the properties, and that person came onto the property and didn't make an offer. So we were looking for property here and elsewhere in New England, found a site that, and we've done quite a lot of study on this, you know, we feel can be, you know, located and very hard to see from Route 7, from the neighbors. And, you know, I'm not going to say totally eliminate visual impacts, but quite mitigated. We've spent quite a lot of time studying the natural communities. We work with VHB. They've got 30 professionals, eight environmental scientists. You'll see our work. Um, you know, and as I said, we're going to take care of the land, we're going to put our pollinator habitat in there. And, um, you know, we'd like to, you know, put a project together that the community would be proud of. You're telling, you know, I hear you saying, you know, why don't you take our considerations into mind? What I would ask is this, how about a two-way street? Because I think you folks have some misconceptions about the project. You haven't had a chance to see the detail, and it would be helpful, you know, if you took a look and put an open mind in this. And if you want to work together and have a back and forth, that's something we're interested in. If you want to tell us this is the way it has to be, that we don't like it based on information that you're picking up off the internet or something, you talked to somebody down the street, you know, we've worked hard, we've invested a lot of money, and, you know, we have the right, and we've been encouraged by state incentives and by, you know, the local, you know, our understanding of the Bennington Regional Plan, that solar would be welcome here. So you, you have a lot of solar in your community, some of which is not shielded at all from view. So you're, you know, we respect your opinion. I hope you respect the fact, you know, you're asking us to think about you and your children. I got three kids. I respect people as well. I have integrity. I've worked to do clean energy projects and clean up the environment for my entire career, which began in 1988. Might not mean anything to the people here, but I'm just telling you. We're trying to do the right thing. If you want to engage, meet in the middle. I yield my last 15 seconds.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak? No hands are raised. Tony, if you'd like to come forward, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tony DiNofrio. I have lived in Shasbury now for a little over 10 years, almost 11 years. I was born in Bennington and raised in western Massachusetts. Couple of things I just wanted to bring up tonight. And we, I think we really need. And I think we really need to stop talking that we're not going to see this project. I spend a lot of time in the woods that surround Holy Smoke. I drive the roads to this community. I live just a couple of miles away. This project's going to be visible, no matter what people are saying that it's not going to be. We are going to see this project from many different vantage points throughout the community and the town. Another thing I wanted to bring up. Northwestern Connecticut and Northeastern Connecticut have plenty of agricultural land, plenty of forests. We all know the reason that they're doing this up here is because land value is a lot more in Connecticut. So let's maximize our profit by buying land cheaper in Vermont, building our solar array, and selling it out of state. I mean, you know, it's pretty obvious. They can get land, that much land, for less money than they would in Connecticut. Another thing I wanted to just read real quick from our own town plan. Policy 4 dot 1 dot 3. Land use proximate to wetlands, streamlands, water bodies, and surface and groundwater source protection areas should not adversely affect the quality of surface and groundwater resources. Employees zoning and development review as tools to protect the quality of streams, rivers, water bodies, including riparian wildlife corridors, highest priority surface water, and riparian areas. Map 4.1. Referencing areas shown on maps 4.1, 4.2, the town should ensure new developments avoiding disrupting rare endangered species habitats, deer wintering areas, and habitat for wide-ranging animals. Look at map 4.1. That's the entire project.
Thank you. Sir, if you'd like to come forward.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. Gentlemen and ladies of the board, I was calling to ask tonight, what is the disposal plan after these panels run out of their lifespan in 20 years? Are they going to be thrown away into landfills like the rest of them? Or will they be recycling, which they are not done yet on an industrial scale like you're planning on implementing? Other thing you said, can you show us the details? You said you'd love to share them with us. Is there some way we can be able to see that as a community here? Furthermore, viability of solar in Vermont. Because of Vermont's minimal solar potential, because of its high latitude, a little bit of background on me, I have a mechanical engineering degree with a focus in power and energy and I took several classes in renewables. Vermont's high latitude makes it much less pristine for solar potential compared to like places like Connecticut or much further places south. But with that, according to weather.us.com, Vermont has 227 cloudy days per year. We have solar panels on our house. They do not produce anything for most of the, like, the time that they were rated for because of the weather that we all live here. Is the weather great? Not always, but we have some good days. Other times, Vermont, we have snow. Snow is great. Snow is not good for solar panels. It took me a week and a half to get the snow completely cleared off the panels then. In that time, our solar panels produced almost nothing. And that was when the last foot and a half storm came in. But it only took, from what I've seen in my house, only about four inches for all the power to be stopped completely. And how often do we get four inches of snow? I know this year's a little bit of an exception, but four inches usually isn't that much. And I wanted to say thank you for coming out here and respecting us. I hope we can all respect you as well, but listen to us. This is our home. This may not be your home, but this is our home. Thank you.
Thank you. Reed, if you'd like to start.
Okay, so a couple of questions. The first one is on disposal. So the, you know, space program was the first to use solar panels. That started in the 50s. So, you know, solar panels will last 50 years. Solar panels are manufactured with warranties that go out as far as 30 years. And the warranty says at the end of 30 years, they'll produce 80% of the energy that they did on the first day. So they're not useless at the end of the 25 or 30 years. So what's going to happen at the end of the project? Most likely thing that's going to happen is if the project's getting shut down, the panels would be used by somebody else. They'd be resold. So it's, you know, it's true. At some point, they're not going to be economically developed. And at that point, they'll be recycling. Recycling is well-established in Europe. And the reason it's established in Europe is because Europe started building solar projects a lot sooner than we did. So we don't have as much end-of-life solar panel to deal with. But that's coming and that same technology can be used here. So you're looking out 40 to 50 years until it has to be disposed of and there's recycling potential. The second question was on efficiency, which is interesting because you're talking to me about the fact you've got solar on your house. So for everybody to say solar doesn't make sense, but if you drive around Shaftesbury and you see all the solar panels out there, obviously it made sense to some of you. Now, why does it make sense to us and what's changing? You said no project has ever been done like this in the state of Vermont. Of course, that's not true. Some of you are fully aware of that. Ludlow, Vermont has a project that is the same capacity as our project, but the difference there was they built on 150 acres. We're building on 85. So the efficiency of the technology has improved enough that we're going to have less impact. Why does that make a difference? Well, a project that's a tenth of our size is going down Cemetery Road and that's going to use 15 acres. That's probably prime ag soil, too. So when you scale up like this, you get some efficiencies. Yes, there's some negative aspects to it. There are some positive aspects to it. But the technology is being used, obviously Massachusetts is basically the same latitude. Lots of solar in Massachusetts. We're virtually in Massachusetts. We're a very short drive away. And then the other thing that's changed, other than the efficiency of the panels, is panels used to have aluminum on the back of them. And so the solar energy was only coming one way. And of course, when you put it on your house, the same thing is true. Solar energy can only enter one way. About four or five years ago, the technology was introduced to remove that aluminum panel and go glass-on-glass. Glass is very strong. They take 100 mile an hour, soft balls and throw it at it. Make sure they can withstand hail. And so what happens now is when it snows, the reflection off of the snow is being captured. So these are called bi-facial panels. There's no exotic technology here. All they did was they just put a solar cell on both sides, put glass on it. So now, in areas that do have a lot of snow, there's actually a pickup of energy. And of course, if you have some solar energy coming out reflecting, you're going to melt off of the face of it. So the technology is moving and is changing. As I said, you know, I've been at this for a while. Been in the energy industry for over 30 years and been doing solar since 2011. And the improvements in the technology have been great. And they should be demanded to be state-of-the-art, to be in your community, and that is our intention.
Thank you. Are there any folks on Zoom that would like to speak? There are not? Okay. Sir, if you'd like to come forward.
Hi, everybody. My name's Wayne Goodman. I live in Bennington. I've lived in New England for 30 years. I am an energy professional, mechanical engineering background. Been working in energy conservation for most of my adult life, starting with deep energy retrofits on residential houses all the way up through solar activity at this level and higher. I'm also the energy chair for the Bennington County Regional Commission Energy Committee, although I'm sure that my opinions run counter to the BRCRC's opinions at this point. I'm here to voice my absolute support for this project. There are only a limited number of times where we're going to have the opportunity to make an impact on our energy consumption and switch it to renewable energy. And this is in my lifetime up here in New England. This is the best project I've seen. And it has to do with the location of the land as it relates to usable infrastructure, three-phase power lines. It has to do with the technology of the solar panels they're using. I do work in the solar industry and I know that we are now recycling solar panels, although most of you in this room won't believe that. The bigger question I have is if you turn this down, if, I mean, well, let me back up and say the one thing I would love to hear that I haven't been hearing as much as I was hoping for is instead of no or hell no, why not you guys say, how can we compromise here? Compromise is the whole deal. Because the bottom line is if this doesn't go through, sooner or later, we're going to lose out on other legitimate companies. And do you really want your power all to come from Quebec Hydro all the time?
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any comments on Zoom? I'm sorry? Oh, yes. And we're going to let Annette speak even though she spoke before because she was raising a comment about not being able to hear. So Annette, can you please speak?
Yes, I wanted to offer clarification. The man who mentioned the Ludlow solar project and the number of acreage, the amount of acreage. So I went to the PUC site and I found the final order. I'm going to read from that. So this is about the 209 watt solar project in Ludlow. It says, "Project description. The project is a 209 watt AC solar electric generation facility that will be sighted on approximately 88.5 acres of a larger 155 acre parcel located on Park Road in Ludlow." So the amount of acreage for that 209 watt project was a total of 88.5 acres.
Thank you, Annette. Carl, if you'd like to come forward, please.
Yes, I'm Carl Corman. We've had our home here in Shaftesbury since 1983. In my former life, of 35 years, I was legal counsel for the Corps of Engineers. My specialty was environmental and construction law. Unfortunately, I've had the experience of having to attend many of these types of public hearings but sitting on the other side of the table. I do not have an opinion yet on whether I support or do not support this. I believe, again, from my experience, the information isn't there to make a decision. I'm looking forward to that information. I'm specifically looking forward to that environmental documentation because from my experience, environmental documentation is what everything will turn on. So I'm going to assume possibly that this project will go through. And I do have a specific question if it does. Would your contracts include any requirement for prime contractors to let a minimum of subcontractors in the, to contractors or material men here in Shaftesbury or at least in Bennington County? And I have an observation. This evening, all of us have been given a lot of information. Mr. Guzman was very, very eloquent in speaking, but I think I'm going to make it a little more specific. It's clear if this goes before, when it goes before the PUC, it will be like a trial. And although a lot of pent-up feeling has been expressed this evening, gut feeling about how we don't want it to be here for some people, that will not carry the day. What will carry the day, unfortunately, as a gentleman earlier mentioned, are expert opinions. And expert opinions require hiring experts. And to the extent that the entity, the company here today, wants to do something, they're going to have to get together to form a committee to get those experts and probably lawyers. And I would appreciate the answer to my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're still engineering project. We have not hired anyone to do the construction work, so we can't make any commitments regarding that. There's certainly got to be local benefit and jobs created and associated with the construction. And I think that's, you know, great input, input that I can take back and allow us, you know, let's keep that in the front. I think, you know, keep that as a hot topic, but allow us to finish engineering it. We haven't gone out to bid. We don't have contractors in front of us yet. And we don't know what either the talent pool is here for people who are skilled at that, but we know people are installing solar, so there's definitely... But the other thing is the capacity, right? Is everybody busy doing rooftop? Is everybody busy doing community solar? So what I would ask is keep it in front and we will continue to address that issue.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom at the moment? Okay. Karen, if you'd like to come forward.
Karen Mellinger. My husband and I have lived in Shaftesbury, not too far from the proposed site, for 40 years. I do want to thank the board and the guests for presenting to us. It's important for the townspeople to have a chance to take a look at this. Couple of points that I wanted to make. One is I'm sure that you must be aware that the water source for North Bennington, the piping runs underneath that parcel that you're proposing to put these things on with heavy equipment. I don't know how you handle all of that, but that's North Bennington's water source and the folks in our center Shaftesbury down here. The other point that I wanted to make is that this project, my understanding is that our town plan, and I'm sure working with the BRCRC, you identified us as having approximately 0.96 megawatts in town at this point or close to it. And the goal for 2050 for Shaftesbury is 10 and 1/2 megawatts. So this project, if this project went through the way it is proposed, within perhaps two years, we have, we will have reached twice the goal for Shaftesbury that has been set for 2050. To me, that seems an awful lot for the town to bear. And I would strongly urge our planning commission, the select board, to do everything that you can to expedite your work on not allowing something like this to happen again because I have no doubt that this, these folks did their job as a business. They looked at a small town. They found land. They found the infrastructure. They found the lines above it. And they took a look at the town plan and said, hey, it's wide open. We can do whatever we want to do. So hopefully you will get that started, maybe get it through before six months so this can come up before us again. And it might be something, if that's in place or at least in process, that the PUC will take a look at as they review this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Oh, David Durfee, please, on Zoom.
Yeah, thanks, brother. I want to go back to a comment that Carl made, Carl Corman made a couple of speakers ago, and again, call on Jim and Eric, who, by the way, I wanted to thank them both for making themselves available tonight to join us and mention that I reached out to somebody in Jim's department Thursday night. It was 9:00 at night and within half an hour, they had some old folks to be here. This is well under our, so we're very appreciative of that. I think that it's not, it's very confusing for many people. They're interested in the agency. I think that it's not, it's very confusing for many people, different agency, Public Utility Commission, and Department of Public Service, which we're getting a little bit of an education tonight, appreciate that. My understanding is that the Department of Public Service in, in part of this role is, is representing the public interest in front of the PUC. And again, if I'm speaking directly, Joe McCray, to Carl's point about there being something equivalent to a trial where the applicant don't have its own attorneys, obviously, that the other interests are not necessarily the ones presented. I think that the Department of Public Service plays that role, but Jim, if you would remind us, clarify.
Well, thank you. And once again, you got that correct. I'm quite sure that once this petition for this project comes before the Public Utility Commission, we will hire an aesthetics person and have a review of that done. As far as aesthetics goes, our position will become whatever the experts' opinion is once they've reviewed the project and done their report. And you're correct, we represent the public interest, which everybody on the top may have a different view of what the public interest is. And so it is frequently not the most popular job in state to have, but just, yeah, we don't represent any specific interest or any party, but you'll be seeing more of us, you know, if and when this project progresses.
Thank you very much. If you want to come forward.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amy Smith. I live in Shaftesbury. A number of my points and questions were actually covered by the gentleman Bleeker, who spoke a few before me, but you mentioned that you are not hurting the land, yet you're clear-cutting 30 acres of hilltop forest. So I don't know how that's not hurting the land if you're clear-cutting 30 acres of forest and then building this industrial-sized solar power plant on prime agricultural land. My, my biggest question is why can't you use other commercial and industrial sites already available in Vermont or anywhere else? I mean, there's so much that's already developed in New England. Why are you picking to clear cut and take prime agricultural land? My third one is a question on what your plan is for keeping the grass and field from turning back into shrub and scrub. Do you plan to mow the 85 acres on a regular basis, or do you plan to use herbicides to keep the grass down? Thanks.
Thank you.
Those are the three.
So the, the project right now is set up to be on 85 acres.
Closer to the mic, sorry, the other.
I want to, I want to look at people and they're on tape. If I had like pigeon eyes or frog eyes, I'd do better. So I apologize if I'm not looking at anyone directly, but I have to look at the microphone. So on the tree cutting, yes, there is going to be some impact. There are hedgerows there, you know, part of the 30 acres are hedgerows that are not, is not high-quality forest, but we are cutting into some of the forests that are there. And there is some impact on that. And even some folks have brought up the fact, hey, trees sequester carbon. And isn't that, you know, something we should be thinking about? Bear in mind, we have, we're going to have an extensive landscape plan, so we are also going to be planting some trees that'll be growing up. And we are willing and are considering doing some conservation of the, there's about 185 acres there of, of some of the trees that are in forest area that's already there, that is not under conservation easement. So there are some ways in which we could work together to protect trees and forests, but there is, you know, I agree with you, there is some impact. The prime agricultural land. So for the last 20 years, you know, based on what the landowner has told us, there's only, you know, other than doing hay, the, they brought in a tenant farmer to try and establish corn, and after two seasons, the tenant farmer gave up. So there really, it's, we understand there's prime agricultural soils. This hasn't been productive land for food production for quite some time. The land is not going to be desecrated. There's not going to be, there's going to be very little grading. So what that means is the soil's going to stay where it is. The primary impact to the land is we're putting I-beams in the land. And when you put I-beams in the land, that's a pretty small footprint, and that's something that can be removed at the end. That's why there are decommissioning bonds, so that the land, that the I-beams can be removed and the copper can be removed and the, the site fully remediated. The last thing I, you know, I'll repeat is, oh, you asked about herbicides, which is a great question. Yeah, we're going to minimize the use of herbicides and we're going to really focus. I'm sorry, did someone tell a joke? So our, our plan, and we're happy to take your input on it, our plan is to do a pollinator habitat on the site. And what you do with a pollinator habitat is you actually, anybody who's done this at their gardens, at the end of the day, there's very little mowing. What you have to do is you have to mow probably five, six times during the year when you're first establishing, and then each subsequent year, the amount of mowing that takes place goes down. And, you know, the, the type of pollinator habitat you put in, you know, the goal is to make it shade resistant, so it will grow and thrive underneath the, the solar panels, but it won't be so high that it would cover the solar panels. And this is an established practice. We are talking with folks and are willing to consider, you know, having, you know, some areas that might be grass or clover and bringing sheep on the site. And I understand there's some folk with sheep in the area, and we'd be happy to have those discussions. And we understand, you know, everybody says, you know, or to the gentleman who said he'd like no herbicides, you know, at this point, you know, we do the best we can. But it, you, you don't need herbicides for a pollinator habitat. And, you know, my final point is, I, I don't, you know, my understanding, talking to a lot of farmers, and we lease and land from a lot of farmers over in, in New York and in other states, and, and in Vermont, is that the pollinator habitat and bringing more pollinators in can be very good for agriculture. And it's actually, pollinator habitat is a threatened resource in most of the Northeast. So some comments have been, oh, you might disrupt the monarch butterfly. The monarch butterfly is going to be all over the place. So, you know, you can take us to task on that. I have a member of my team that's on the Maryland Board of, you know, ground cover, you know, establishing ground cover as a prerequisite, native ground cover and pollinator in the state of Maryland. We've put a lot of time into this and happy to share that knowledge and also to learn from you what you think native habitat would work best.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak?
Okay.
Ma'am, if you'd like to come forward, please.
Thank you for allowing public comment tonight. My name is Jennifer Buddle, and I'm a Shaftesbury resident of, I think, 24 years. I could be off. One of the reasons that I am happy to be a Shaftesbury resident is because we have a rural community. That rural community consists of farms, homes, natural views, filled with wildlife, and it is not consumed with industrial locations. I am, however, a solar supporter of small-scale solar energy. I am not a supporter of this project. I would like to believe that the public representation has our public interest in mind, but there are some serious concerns. Some of the proposed site is on a north-facing slope. I don't know how many of us were born yesterday, but a north-facing slope for solar in Vermont doesn't make any sense. Also, those, the north-facing slope is what faces most of the residential places that can be seen for the proposed site. So to modify or to work together, perhaps considering changing some of the locations of where the panels are going to be and removing the north-facing panels, removing them off of the wetlands, that might make it a little bit more palatable for some of the people saying heck no right now. Also, I have a lot of concerns and questions, and I hope that in the public state-level reviews, I look forward to an Act 250 because I really believe that that is supposed to be there to protect the neighbors of these kinds of large-scale projects in Vermont. But I hope that there's an Act 250 review that includes wildlife and other impacts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak?
Okay.
Sir, if you'd like to come forward.
Hello, thank you. I'm Marcus Jones, landowner in Shaftesbury. I'm going to start with a, I have three questions ultimately for Jim Porter and Eric Guzman. Start with a quick definition, first, of appropriate technology is suitable for the cultural, economic, and environmental context in which they are employed. The choice of technology should be driven by the needs and resources of the communities it serves, rather than by the commercial interest of technology providers. The goal of appropriate technology is to create sustainable solutions that improve quality of life for people in a given community without causing harm to environment or exacerbating social and economic qualities. In 248B2, one of the requirements is, is required to meet the present, future demand for service which could not otherwise be provided in a more effective manner than conservation, energy efficiency, and load management. How is this determined and is photovoltaics the appropriate technology in this case? That's the first question. Second question in 248B4, will this result in economic benefit to the state and residents? Just an explanation of how that benefits the state, this project. And the third question is, the Department of Public Service heavily regulates the utilities in the state. They undergo rigorous oversight on a yearly basis to ensure that the ratepayers' best interest is being met. What evaluations have been done of the past two-plus, or two-megawatt or larger arrays in the state to verify that concerns raised by citizens during the project process were met? Those are my three questions.
Jim or Eric, could you respond to some of those questions, please?
Sure, and I'm, I'm going to go first, and because Eric's memory is better than my first one. The question regarding economic benefit, the analysis is a little different for a merchant plant. There was reference made to the regulation over the more rate-regulated electric utilities. And those, we are very concerned about any project that they construct as to whether the ratepayers would suffer any potential harm from that. As I say, it's a little different in the realm of a merchant plant like this one would And Eric, did you catch the other question?
I actually might need a refresher on the two remaining questions there, but on the first question with respect to need for present future demand in service, that is, I'm sorry, the economic benefits of the state is the question. You know, there, there are several factors. You know, the department has a certain finance and planning division that does conduct a review under that criteria. You know, depending, it varies depending on the project, but, you know, certain aspects of the project's contribution to the state could be, for example, I think as mentioned earlier, the taxes paid as a result of the project, or the use of consultants and employees from the state to create additional jobs. There, there are various factors that are coming to play within that criteria alone, and that's something that the department has a staff within its own divisions to review the project and impact to that specific criteria. And then if the second question, just briefly be summarized for me here, just for my own benefit.
Yeah, it's in relation to the 248B2 where it requires the, the requirement for these projects to meet past or present and future demand for service which could not otherwise be provided in a more cost-effective manner through conservation, energy efficiency, and load management. So how is that determined, that this is the most appropriate technology that doesn't have a better alternative? Because I have an alternative that I believe is better.
But you are not able to say.
I know, but I'm just saying like there's.
I'm sorry, but yes, thank you very much.
Right, yeah, so the, yes, the department's, once more, you know, is finance and planning division that does assess that particular criteria as to whether the project does present a cost-efficient manner to, to assist the state progression to renewable energy goals. We currently do not use efficient as an example yet, so we don't have an assessment or acquisition on that particular criteria at this time, but, you know, that, that is something that we certainly do review. And in instances such as this, would likely provide testimony from our, our, our staff to address that specific criteria.
Thank you for those answers. Is there anybody?
And I'm sorry, I think there was a third question, ma'am.
There was a third question, which was in related, relation to, would it be, would the DPS be supportive of evaluating, going to do lessons learned of other projects that have been installed in the state to ensure that what was said during the hearings and the whole process was actually followed through and met?
Right, so the Section 240 process essentially is a question of whether to issue a certificate of public good by the commission, which is essentially the permit that allows construction and operation of the plant. In many instances, facilities, projects are required to provide compliance filings, depending on, depending on what, what specific issues were raised, to ensure that, that the project was built as, as indicated in, within the proceeding itself. If the project is not built with, within the premises of a site plan, landscape investigation measures, for example, or the testimony that is submitted, there is a, an avenue to, you know, seek, for example, penalties against the, the petitioner for, you know, failing to abide by those specific conditions of its certificate of public good, or the site plan and testimony that was, that was relied upon by the commission to issue its decision. And in some instances, we have sought penalties for failure to comply with site plans. And so if that, you know, if a petition was granted in this instance, and a CPG was issued, we would assume that maybe some compliance filings would be necessary, depending on the issues that are raised, and we would, you know, seek to ensure that the plans and evidence submitted were, were followed through with, with the project's construction.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to make a comment? Okay. If you'd come forward, please. Okay, if you'd come forward, please.
That's good, I'm not the last man standing. My name's Travis Buttle, I've been a resident of Shasberry here for, since 1998, somewhere in there.
You need to come closer.
It's been a long time. I, too, well, we have, we have solar on our house since 2017. One of the things that was wonderful and glamorous in the sales pitch that was given to us was that it was going to save us a lot of money, and we were doing great for the environment and all those things. I want to touch on a few of those things. It hasn't been as great as was, as a sales pitch that was given to us. It underproduces, and when we talked to the company about it, they were like, oh, well, our initial analyses were wrong, okay? The recycling thing has come up a couple times, we've heard from a local resident, as well as you, saying there's recycling in Europe, I don't know, one question is, you know, what is that percentage of recycling? We all that go to the dump here know that we've put all of our recycling in and place. I know from personal experience and from my son who worked for TAM, the majority of recycling that goes on in our country doesn't go anywhere. So I would wonder, what is the actual percentage of recycling that happens with this? I know it gets better over time, and you say, which I learned a few things tonight, 50 years on a panel, that's great, because that's not what I was told either, in my sales pitch, and I keep putting sales pitch in here. We need to make sure we don't hear a sales pitch, and get lulled by something that's going to be different five years from now, or a year from now, when we all realize and wake up and find out that the money is gone. My other point that I want to emphasize is something that I experienced and have experienced for 25 years, is a fractionalization of our wildlife habitats. Doesn't only happen on one specific small level, like this particular project is not going to be a huge impact on the overall environment of what we're looking at on all of our wildlife species, okay? That fractionalization creates a breakup of wildlife diversity, and without wildlife diversity, meaning everything from the ants and the gnats, all the way up to the moose, we need it to be not fractionalized, that happens both with fenced-in projects like this, as well as neighboring, so look at the overall mosaic, is what my question to you is, and. I didn't catch the VHB, what does that stand for? I don't, you said you belong with VHB?
The time is up.
It's an engineering firm, just Google VHB.com.
Okay, well, there's a lot of VHBs, so just wanted to share what that means.
Reed, if you can come up to the microphone so that everybody could hear, please, and have a response to that question, thank you.
Can I get the same mulligan? Can you please repeat your question, I followed that.
So there was a question about the percentage of recycling, that was the question that was asked.
Yeah, I don't have an exact, I don't have a exact percentage recycling, but, you know, what's happening in recycling in this country, if you're talking about plastics recyclings and other, you know, has very little to do with what's, you know, going to go on with solar panels. The solar panels can be reused, reuse is the best, as we all know, way better than recycling, and they can be reused, and we can look into and share with the Planning Commission feedback on the actual percentages of recycling.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? Mr. August, if you'd like to come forward.
My name's Michael August, I've lived on Holy Smoke Road for more than 30 years at this point. I want to support my budding neighbors, I think most of what I wanted to say has already been said. Just one, one quick thing, I think all you need to do is walk down Holy Smoke Road, and you'll know whether you're going to see these panels or not. I mean, it's just, it's an obvious thing, you're going to see the panels. The one point I want to make is Holy Smoke Road is a very fragile road, takes a lot of maintenance, the town road crew is great, they keep it, they keep it in shape, but a big storm, a big snow, the road always needs work. So I think a lot of, a lot of trucks, a lot of industry coming up and down that road is not going to be good, and I understand you're looking to have something off a seven that might help, but I still think there's going to be a lot of traffic down that road now, and the road's not designed for it. So something's got to be done, I'm concerned about water runoff with that. I did want to say something about the town plan, which I think doesn't have any restrictions now, I'm glad you're looking at it, I think it's really important that the Planning Board and the Select Board does give an opinion. I mean, we've heard from a number of people now that that is important, so we would look to that, and I'm hoping to see this talked about during town meeting as well.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody on Zoom that's looking to speak? All right, if you'd come forward, please.
Hello, my name is Lisa Peslich, I am a resident of Shasberry and have been since 1999. I came to this meeting here with an open mind, trying to learn as much as possible about this project that I feel is very impactful on our town, and after listening tonight, I really want to respect the opinions of people who seem to have some deep background in engineering and other things that really are for this project because of climate change. I respect solar, I have solar panels in my backyard, but I'm also learning that perhaps this site was picked because of lack of regulations in our town to prevent something like this from coming here, and the ability to buy the land cheaply by a big corporation, which makes it feel to me like our small town is being taken advantage of by a big corporation. I'm deeply concerned about the environmental impact of something of this scale. I'm also very concerned about the nature and character of Vermont, and especially the impact on Studio Hill Farm, which is using ecotourism to also help save our environment, and I don't feel like we should work at cross purposes to have one thing that's supposed to save our environment and our world, also destroy something else that has been growing and is a beautiful thing that is trying to save our world. So I feel like it's, it doesn't have to be either or, like, why can't we find a better site, or smaller projects in places that are already environmentally compromised, and not destroy something that is so beautiful the way it is? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? Is there anybody else in the audience who has not spoken once this evening that would like to speak? We'd like to thank everybody for coming and speaking and sharing opinions, we'd like to thank Bill, Representative David Durfee, Jim Porter, Eric Guzman, and Reed Wills for coming out tonight, and hope that you have a good night, thank you so much.